Good evening. Welcome to the City Council Work Session for Wednesday, April 5th. We'll call the work session to order at 6:00 P. M. First agenda item is bid recommendation for fleet acquisition for the purchase of its Ford 2020 Transit van for Department of Public Parks and Recreation Senior Van Service, Department of Public Works. You have the floor.
Uh, thank you, Councilmember Cole, Mayor, and other council members. The Department of Public Works is requesting approval for the purchase of a 2024 Transit Passenger Van to replace the equipment that has exceeded its lifespan. This vehicle will be utilized as a part of the van fleet necessary to continue to provide transport services for seniors in our city. The department solicited several quotes, including from vendors on state and county contracts. The accepted quote is from Academy Ford of Laurel, Maryland, which is one of the city's vendors list. The quote was as follows: Academy Ford, forty-nine thousand nine hundred and thirty-five, Antwerp Toyota of Clockfield, Maryland, forty-eight thousand four ninety-five, and Coons Ford of Silver Spring, Maryland, fifty thousand zero zero two dollars. Based on the fleet schedule, the following vehicle will be replaced with a new acquisition. Vehicle number seven fifty-four, which is a two thousand four Transport Van, will be replaced with the twenty-twenty Transport Passenger Van. Funding for this equipment is provided for the adopted FY twenty-twenty-three CIP Fleet Replacement Program. Cost for the vehicle again is forty-nine thousand nine hundred and thirty-five dollars. It is recommended that the purchase of this vehicle for for the total cost of forty-nine thousand nine hundred and thirty-five be approved to Academy Ford of Laurel. The vehicle to be purchased from Academy Ford meets the city's needs better than the other two vehicles. The cost of this vehicle is within the three percent difference allowed for the Laurel area business, and I'm available if you have any questions.
Thank you, Director Lee. Are there any questions from the council?
I guess my only question, if if the new van is purchased, uh, will the other the older vans be sold? Well, I guess, is that the plan?
Uh, yes, if we don't determine that it's useful as a reserve vehicle, then we do sell them.
Okay.
Thank you. Councilman Sidnor? Alright, hearing no further questions, uh, if the council agrees, the bid will be awarded on the meeting on Monday, April tenth at six P. M. Our next agenda item is bid recommendation for video detection systems for three intersections. Your Department of Public Works or, uh, Director Lee, you have the floor.
Thank you, Councilmember Cole, mayors, and council members again. This memo is to request a sole source approval for a total of eleven video detection cameras from Econolite Control Products at the following intersection. Cherry Lane at Fourth Street, three cameras for a price of twenty-one thousand five hundred and fifty dollars. Cherry Lane at Ashford Boulevard, four cameras for a price of twenty-seven thousand five hundred and ten dollars. Van Duzen Road at Kilborn Drive slash Olive Branch Way, four cameras at twenty-seven thousand five hundred and ten dollars. During the past fiscal year, the complaints surrounding traffic signal operation concerns has increased, especially at these intersections. Our inspectors have determined that the need to replace the video detection systems and replace and upgrade the electrical electrical wire so that the signal timing can be calibrated, reduce the chance of vehicular accidents due to malfunction signals and decreased traffic delays. In the future, the visual cameras that we're requesting can also be used for vehicle detection, bicycle detection, advanced vehicle detection, traffic data collection, and H. D. Video Surveillance. These capabilities will help immensely in upgrading a city's remote capacity, real-time traffic management, and bring us in line with the state and other surrounding counties on sharing and correlating traffic data. Econolite is our current contractor and a leading manufacturer for traffic signal equipment. Their video detection system meets the Maryland D. O. T. Standards and is the sole source for all manufacturing, sales, and software maintenance agreements for the video detection products, cabinets, and controllers with M. D. D. O. T. Certificate specifications. E. P. W. Is recommended approval of the purchase of the camera and wiring service from Econolite Contract Products in the amount of seventy-six thousand five hundred and seventy dollars for the hardware and upgrades, and an additional eighteen thousand four hundred and seventy-one dollars and twenty-five cents for the replacement process testing and necessary wiring service. The total cost of this project is ninety-five thousand forty-one dollars and twenty-five cents. Funding for this project is provided through the adopted FY twenty-twenty-three Journal Operating Budget and C. I. P. Specifically, Traffic Signalization Project and Traffic Signals Maintenance. I'm available if you have any questions on that.
Thank you, Director Lee. Are there any questions from the council?
Yes, I had a couple of questions, just to clarify. These are not speed cams or raylight cameras, safety cameras.
No, uh, no, sir. These are not speed light, speed or red light camera. They are in fact safety cameras for traffic monitor.
There's no fine going with this with this camera system.
No.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Director Lee, I have a question. You had mentioned that these cameras will be able to tell the difference between pedestrians, cars, bicycles. Does that mean there's some sort of A. I. inside the camera?
Uh, I I'm not sure of the complete process. I'd rather get you an accurate answer before I try to answer that.
Thank you. Other questions for Director Lee? Hearing no further questions, if the council agrees, the bid will be awarded at the Monday meeting on April tenth. Next agenda item is a bid recommendation for the radio grant purchase of twenty-seven Motorola Next Generation N. Seventy Public Safety Radios. Department of Information and Technology Director Cornwall Shield, you have the floor.
Thank you, Councilmember Cole, Mayor Mo, council members. Uh, you have before you, as you said, a bid recommendation for the purchase of twenty-seven Next Generation Motorola N. Seventy Public Safety Radios, including all appropriate accessories for the total amount of one hundred ninety-nine thousand nine hundred and nineteen dollars and eight cents. Uh, these radios will have full interoperability with existing radios, uh, on our police network as well as the rest of the county radio network, and they will provide a wide variety of critical features, including connection resilience through the use of Wi-Fi and cellular connectivity, in addition to traditional radio. Uh, vendor is Motorola Solutions in Beltsville, Maryland, and thanks to the efforts of Senator Van Holland, funding for this project was right provided in full by a Department of Justice Burn Justice Assistance Grant. Um, Chief Hamill, do you have anything you'd like to add about these radios?
Just thank you, uh, for your office's, uh, resilience and getting this through. We appreciate it, and we'll upgrade our radio proficiency, uh, in large manner. So, thank you.
Alright, that's all. If, uh, you have any questions, we are available for, uh, all of them.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the council?
Yeah, just one quick question. I didn't see it in the writing. Are these portable radios or these radios going to be installed in the police cars?
These are portable radios.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions from the council? Hearing none, if the council agrees, the bid will be awarded at the Monday, April tenth meeting of the City Council. Our next agenda item is, uh, ordinance number two thousand and nine, an ordinance of the Mayor and City Council of Laurel, Maryland granting a non-exclusive cable television franchise to Comcast of Maryland L. L. C. to construct, operate, and maintain a cable system within the city of Laurel, Maryland, pursuant to the provisions of Chapter Five of the Laurel City Code, and to approve a cable franchise agreement. Director Cornwall Shield, again, you have the floor.
Thank you again, Councilman Cole and the mayor, and then all of their council members in attendance. Uh, you have the long-awaited cable Comcast Cable Franchise Agreement, uh, that has been worked on by my predecessor, Kevin Frost, alongside, uh, numerous jurisdictions in our county and the county, um, over the last almost seven years. And, um, to brief you on that and to, um, answer any questions, we have Mr. Lay and Kevin Frost himself on hand. You have the floor, Mr. Lay.
Thank you. A pleasure to be here, uh, this evening, uh, virtually, uh, mayor and council members of you exactly right. It's been a long process. A little bit of background, uh, the current com franchise that Comcast is operating under is in essence a de facto extension of the one that was granted, uh, in nineteen ninety-nine, I believe. It expired in twenty fourteen. Uh, negotiations actually began before that. Um, it's a long road. There are several reasons for that. It was sort of a, uh, combined negotiation by the Prince George's County jurisdictions and and the big five and a lot and several smaller jurisdiction. Uh, it is, in essence, a uniform agreement with small variations for each jurisdiction that I'll speak to in a moment. In the case of Laurel, um, there are very, there are many, very many reasons for the duration of the negotiations. One is, is you have a very good franchise now, and, uh, the movement in the cable industry and in the law is such that, uh, you have a pretty good franchise or a good franchise as you have, uh, having it extend as long as possible is usually not a bad idea for most jurisdictions because usually what you end up doing in negotiation is fighting to keep what you have, uh, not to get a lot more. Uh, it was further complicated in this case by in the late teens. Uh, the F. C. C. Started a couple of proceedings, uh, that would have redefined what counted as a five percent franchise fee in a way that would be very detrimental to local governments, uh, basically would, uh, eat into your fan five percent franchise fee because the in-kind benefits in your franchise would count against the five percent cap. That proceeding took quite some time in the late teens, uh, until twenty, and then it was an appeal, uh, to the courts of the Federal Courts of Appeal. A partial victory on that appeal of what's most important to local governments, and it sort of broke the logjam in the negotiations, was the value of in-kind franchise benefits in your agreement do count against the five percent cap, but only at incremental cost. And the incremental cost of most of the franchise obligations that you have is very close to zero. So, as a practical matter, that victory in the appeal, uh, saved most of the provisions in the franchise. Um, with that, I thought I'd give you sort of just a brief overview of the terms of the franchise. As I mentioned, a lot of the major terms are very similar to the current franchise. It's for ten years from the effective date, which will be this coming July one. Uh, franchise fee will be five percent as it was before. We revised, uh, the franchise fee definition somewhat, a little bit, uh, primarily to make it as broad as federal law allows. Federal law places a cap on, uh, to leave open the unaddressed and unresolved question, uh, going forward. Uh, we had to sort of agree to disagree because it hasn't been resolved whether video streaming services provided over a cable system, the revenues that Comcast earns from those, uh, count against, uh, they have to pay fees on them. Uh, the revenue definition is broad enough to include that if those kind of revenues are determined to be a cable service uh, during the life of the franchise. Uh, also was preserved was a three percent, uh, peg fee, public educational and governmental access fee that, uh, you're currently receiving. Uh, the other third major prong was a settlement of, uh, uh, an internet I'm sorry, an institutional network provisions in the ninety-nine agreement. In that agreement, Comcast agreed to provide an institutional network to Laurel and to the other jurisdictions in Prince George's County, uh, and and grant them an indefensible right of use, uh, for some fibers, uh, throughout the county and in the city. Um, Comcast, like almost all cable operators, doesn't don't really want to do I. Nets anymore because they're in the business providing broadband, uh, customers and getting paid for it. Uh, but we were able to negotiate a settlement, uh, with Comcast that basically preserves the institutional network for another ten years for life of this agreement, so, uh, twenty thirty-four. Uh, that extension, uh, will enable, uh, the city, which is actually in better shape than most jurisdictions in the county, uh, to transition from the, uh, fiber network owned by Comcast, uh, to basically build the the city's own institutional network so it won't have to rely upon the Comcast network anymore. And the good news is for that period, um, the only cost for the city will be each pro-rata share, which is relatively small, of county-wide, uh, uh, Comcast's, uh, uh, maintenance costs for the institutional network, and those are capped. And you'll see in the rest of the agreement, it's capped by year for the term. It's in the range of around two hundred thou- little over two hundred thousand a year, but that's for the county and all the jurisdictions in the county. So Laurel share would be a very small portion of that. Not only that, but the settlement agreement also provides that the city can use the revenues from the three percent peg fee if it wishes to pay those costs so they wouldn't come out of a general fund at all. Uh, so, so those are some of the major provisions. Another provision that was beefed up because it's a problem in Laurel and as it was in all the jurisdictions is Comcast has a sort of bad habit of leaving a lot of loose wires or unburied cable or abandoned uh, uh, equipment in boxes in people's yards without repairing it or removing it. We beefed up those provisions in the, uh, agreement rather significantly and also, uh, imposed fines and also gave the city the option of city if, uh, if, uh, on request, Comcast didn't take care of the problem, the city could do it itself, uh, and Comcast would have to reimburse the city for its cost to do it. That's a sort of general overview. Another sort of dynamic in the background of the negotiations was, of course, Verizon's franchise. Comcast, uh, uh, talks a lot about the competition it faces, so that was always a pressure we had back uh, on, uh, comparing the agreement to that. The city will face that issue because the Verizon franchise, uh, which is also sort of expired. Uh, negotiations on that have been ho- sort of on hold until the Comcast agreement is is resolved, which hopefully it will be now, and we can use that as a model to speak with Verizon. Uh, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions, uh, the mayor council members have.
Thank you, Mr. Lay, Mr. Frost, and Mr. Shield. Any further comments before I ask the council? Alright, any comments from the council?
Yes, uh, I have several questions. Um, like the first question, can you explain, um, the institution network? And can you explain that process again? I know you said it was a settlement.
Mm-hmm.
And I just explained that process again. I I got the fees in that nature. That's not an issue, but I just wanted some follow-up questions once I totally understand institutional network.
The institution, sure, the institutional network, actually, the federal law defines it. It's a network. It's not really a video service network at all. It's a network that provides, uh, communications connections between institutions, city government locations, and also be, uh, nonprofits or elsewhere. The 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 original agreement defined the locations that are served by the institutional network. In the original ninety-nine agreement, uh, provided for the construction, Comcast's construction of that network, and it basically has completed it a good while back, and it also maintains and operates it. Uh, the city has dedicated fibers on that network. Uh, going forward, particularly in light of the S. C. C. proceeding I mentioned, uh, the law sort of changed not in the city's favor. That is, going forward, if you demand an institutional network from a cable operator, the cost of that network, the bulk of it would count against the five percent franchise fees that you receive, reducing the general revenue fund to do it. But we had a settlement with Comcast because the original institutional network granted the city in what are called an indefeasable rights of use. In essence, the city sort of owned that capacity on the fiber. And Comcast didn't want that to continue, so to settle and release that, they had to agree to continue to operate the institutional network for free, except for reimbursement of maintenance costs for the next ten years.
Okay, got it. Alright, so my other two questions is that you say that, I know in the association I should live in, a lot of boxes on unmanned cables everywhere. So you're saying that in that agreement that you guys would come up first and fix it, but if you take too long, then the city can come fix it and you get reimbursed. The city will bill Comcast to come back and, you know?
Yes.
Okay.
Because that's an on, that's been an ongoing problem, uh, with Comcast.
So how long, so how long should the city wait before we, uh, send you guys a bill? Man, is that?
Well, good, before you send them, either fix it yourself or we're going to give them thirty days notice, and they either do it or you're going to do it for them and bill them, and then they have to pay.
Got you. Then this question is for, um, um, the staff here. So over a long period of time, it's going to be beneficial if us have our own fiber, um, than, um, rely on Comcast and pay them a fee.
Yes, absolutely, and that is, uh, that is what we've been working toward over the last several years under the direction of, uh, um, my predecessor, Mr. Frost, and we continue to build up our fiber, as does the county. There is a countywide effort, um, through the I. Net team there to basically replace, uh, the Comcast fiber, uh, over the next however many years that takes. They're still finalizing that plan.
And I will say, I think as I mentioned earlier, the city of Laurel is actually further along in deploying its own network than most of the jurisdictions in the county.
Okay, so this question's there for the staff. So eventually, let's say ten years from now, that we have the whole city, uh, built with, uh, fiber, right, and the contract expire with Comcast, and another carrier, cable carrier come on, come on board. Would that fiber still be able to use, uh, with that next, uh, cable provider? Or fiber would just be used on any provider? Doesn't matter.
So in this instance, uh, the cable that we would be replacing it with is actually our own private cable. Uh, so it wouldn't be requiring a carrier like Verizon or Comcast or anybody like that, um, in these cases. Uh, we're basically replacing what we are essentially leasing from them, um, as with our own, um, our own infrastructure.
Okay, I know this is a projection question. You don't have to answer it tonight, but just projection. So what's the price of that for the city to install fiber throughout the whole city that we don't need Comcast or Verizon, whoever fiber? What do you think that would cost?
A lot of money, a lot of money.
I I know that, though.
Well, if you go back, Keith, if you go back and look at what, I guess, Kevin, it's been about seven years since we started doing fiber. I think it's about seven or eight years ago.
It's probably, you know, a little over five, probably, we started.
So we started putting putting that together, and, you know, um, depends on how much, whether, you know, in one case we had to go across one ninety or under one ninety-eight or, uh, uncertain bridges. It's very costly. I don't, I mean, you know, we can try to work something up.
Yeah, that's cool. I I I.
No, we're, we're, um, actually, you know, where we are now is we are fully built out as a city. All our buildings are connected on our private fiber. We just finished the the big run, and we actually spent a long time getting a permit from C. S. X. To go onto the railroad across from, uh, Public Works, and we picked up, uh, we've run, we've already got fiber in the new building at two oh four Dreamview Pool and down there. So all our buildings are connected, and Mr. Lay talked about Comcast fiber for the next ten years. Most of our buildings have the Comcast fiber now, and, um, uh, James and I have talked, and we will, uh, the city will continue to pay that small maintenance fee for the next ten years um, because what it gives us is, it gives us now redundancy, um, for the buildings. We now have two pieces of fiber. And I can tell you, in the five years, um, that we've been putting fiber in the ground, uh, we've had the fiber cut three times. In fact, one of our fiber pieces now is cut, and we're looking, uh, trying to figure out where it is and who did it and get it repaired. So, um, the Comcast fires, uh, fibers on poles, aerial, our fiber's in the ground. Um, so, um, both of those are susceptible to to storm damage, and in our case, uh, our fiber is, um, uh, getting dug up, whether it's B. G. N. E. Or W. S. S. C. Um, W. S. S. C. Uh, seems to be the one that, uh, we have issues with here lately, but, um, but we're built out, um, and we're, uh, we're actually also built out to the tower at Schweitzer on Public Safety. We brought up, uh, our new microwave network on the on the fiber to the tower at the county. So we're in good shape, um, and we put a lot of fiber in the ground, um, that can be used, um, in other, in other places in the future and other, um, in other ways. Um, so, um, we're, we're in pretty good shape, but, um, there's still more to be done. Brian mentioned the 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 intersections and buying the cameras for the, uh, traffic lights uh, on Cherry Lane and Mandus, and we have fiber at those traffic lights now, so we can bring them up once they're done. We do not have it at Olive Branch and Kill Baron, but we have it at the firehouse, and that is a very short run to pick up those two intersections. So, um, so that as Tim mentioned, um, the I. Net part of this, the institutional network, um, was a big, um, a big part of the negotiation uh, in getting that all agreed to because of the indefeasible right to use, and Comcast wanted to, wanted to stop that.
Yeah, I remember talking about some of that before I first got on the council. My last question is probably, um, kind of late at night, but, um, Wi-Fi. We have free Wi-Fi throughout the city and our parks.
James?
So we do not have, uh, Wi-Fi at all of our parks yet. Uh, we are expanding our Wi-Fi coverage to new parks every time we get, uh, new, uh, network coverage there. Uh, there are a few where we are, um, well, take Discovery Park. We just got fiber there. Uh, we just got power coming up there so that we're going to have cameras and, uh, and Wi-Fi there. Uh, we've also got, uh, was it Centennial Park on, uh, I think Centennial Park is the other one that we're about to have come up. But yes, we are, we are opening up, uh, free Wi-Fi, free public Wi-Fi at those locations.
Yeah, just provide me a list of the parks that have the free Wi-Fi and any places we have in the city that have free Wi-Fi.
Yep.
And can Comcast, uh, that says my final question is that, can Comcast get us some free, uh, Wi-Fi for some citizens? I know we got a program that we can go through, but gotta get a certain income to, uh, Comcast offer any assistance with that as well.
Comcast and Verizon have low-income programs, um, that is on their websites. Um, but if you know somebody or you think somebody is interested in it, we, um, James can get you information on that and who to contact.
Alright, thank you. That's my final question. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Councilman Sidnor. Councilman Mitchell, do you have any questions about ordinance number twenty-two thousand and nine?
Sure, yeah, I just had a, a few questions. I I guess one question was, uh, when we do develop our own fiber completely through the city, there will be certain, uh, I guess, tax benefits, right, for, um, having our own fiber through the city?
The council member, the current fiber we have now is for municipal use. It's private government use. Um, there has been some discussions about leasing some of the fiber we've put in the ground. We have put in several areas, uh, large amounts of it, um, for the future that the potential is there to be leased. There is currently no discussion to start our own, uh, internet service providing or broadcasting, uh, um, media or anything. I only know of one. I think Westminster does it. It's the only municipality I know in Maryland that does it.
They do. They work it with with team. Yeah, that's correct.
But, uh, but there is potential to, um, lease that fiber to businesses down the road, um, should the city want to pursue that.
Sure, that would, that was kind of tying into my second question with like the the library and, uh, the the high school and and the senior center, like, are those things that would be potentially tied in or, um, I guess leased? But I I guess my initial question was, would we as a city receive, uh, like, like a tax benefit from, you know, uh, equipping the city with our own fiber?
No, no, we own the, we own it. We paid for it. Um, the high school, the library, those are county buildings, and they are connected to the county on I. Net fiber, the county's, uh, I. Net fiber.
Okay, understood. Thank, thank you, Mr. Frost.
Thank you. Any other questions from the council? Alright, I, I do have one question, Mr. Lay. At the end of the ten years, is there a rollover period? I know you said the current agreement's been rolling over for many years now. Is that still built into the agreement?
It 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 is, uh, because as a practical matter, obviously, the cable operator does not want it to end anyway because the federal law requires them to have a franchise. Um, so it is a practical matter. It would anyway. because the federal law requires them to have a franchise. Um, so it is a practical matter, it would anyway. Um, but yes.
Thank you. If there are no other questions from the council, ordinance number two thousand and nine will have first public hearing at the city council meeting on Monday, April tenth, six P M.
Mr. President, if I could, I'd, I'd like to ask just, just two questions.
Sure, go ahead.
Uh, officially, on the fines that we can give to Comcast, um, does it specify that they're not able to use our paid money or do they use? How is that done? Do you know by chance?
You mean when the city imposes fines on them?
Impose a fee, yeah.
You know, there's a process in the agreement. Uh, you notify them, you find them in violation, you give them an opportunity to respond, defend themselves. You have a hearing and then uh, you rule and assess the fine. They pay the fine uh, uh, out of their own pocket. Uh, the city can withdraw it from a, a, a bond that the agreement requires, but you can also require them to pay it directly and they have to replenish the bond if you kick it out of the bond. But it has nothing to do, they still owe, it doesn't come out of three percent or five percent.
Yeah, I just did, when I read the agreement fee, and I might add, the agreement is, is really a good time, a good time to read and, and real fun to read the uh, agreement, I might add. Um.
Particularly if you're having a hard time falling asleep at night, probably.
It is, I read it a couple of times and then with uh, Kevin, I had to sit down with the James. Um, I, I guess what I'm also very curious, because you're the um, you deal with a lot of these different franchises, you watch it closely. Where do you think we're go, I mean, I'm very concerned about the funding uh, in years down the road because it's gonna go away. And which is why they don't wanna allow us to get anything for the streaming that's going on now. Do you see that, I mean, should the city be preparing, you know, down the road, you know, ten years down the road, that this all goes away?
Uh, well, that's a very.
From a funding standpoint.
Yes, and that's, that's a very uh, wise question. Uh, the trend has probably already started. I mean, you think of Comcast as a cable company, they actually have more broadband subscribers than they have cable subscribers now. And that's more than half their revenue is from broadband, not from cable. And that trend's gonna continue. Uh, Comcast will still be in the cable business probably for ten years for other reasons because they are not just a cable operator, they're a content provider, they own NBC and Universal and, and their revenue comes, they get more revenue from their cable subscribers, the content producers do than they've done do for, over the years. So that will probably stay a while, but yes, you will see conservative budgeting would assume you're gonna see a diminution of the amount of revenues you receive from franchise fees and pay fees over the life of this franchise unless, the only unlesses are uh, Laurel wouldn't want to take on the whole cable industry world on this, but sooner or later, one would think there's gonna be a fight over whether uh, video streaming revenues provided to cable scrub subscribers over a cable system count against the, you know, or can, you can impose a five percent fee on them. Uh, unless you have a change like that or a statutory change that allowed the city to impose fees uh, on those kind of services. Uh, in other words, you probably need a change in law or a win in court, but otherwise you sort of probably should conservatively assume your revenue streams of those sources will be declining over the next ten years.
Okay, that, uh, thank you very much. Mr. President, I do wanna um, just acknowledge the work that James and um, and Kevin in particular, uh, have been doing. This is not something that's been done over a period of a month. It's been uh, years that we've been dealing with this. Um, a lot of different um, things have come up. You heard about the court cases and others. So I want to acknowledge uh, the work that they did and, and Kevin in particular for uh, getting it squared away. And Mr. Lay, thank you for your professionalism, but um, and as I close, uh, let me just remind everybody to wish Kevin a happy birthday today. It's his birthday, so we don't want him to feel this is his gift, this is your gift, Kevin, the franchise agreement. So, but thank you all very much. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Moving on, our next agenda item is ordinance number two thousand and an ordinance of the mayor and city council of Laurel, Maryland to amend chapter nine miscellaneous provisions and offenses to modify article ten disposable plastic bags to prohibit disposable plastic bags from being provided to customers and retail establishments at the point of sale and to provide for penalties and violations of the ordinance. Uh, environmental programs manager, Ms. Blair, you have the floor.
Thank you, sir. Um, good afternoon, good evening, mayor and council. Um, I know it's late and everyone was moving at a um, very good clip, so I will keep with the trend. Um, as you all know, ordinance nineteen seventy-seven was passed in June of twenty twenty-one and enacted in January of twenty twenty-two. What you may not know is that Laurel became the first municipality in Prince George's County to pass such a ban. What you also may not know is that our progressive thinking garnered the attention of the Washington Metropolitan Council of Governments, the Sierra Club, Maryland Recycling Network, and started a wave across the state allowing other municipalities, Easton, Salisbury, Tacoma Park, and our closest neighbors, Greenbelt and College Park to pass their own legislation. This updated ordinance fills in gaps that are defines reusable and focuses on reducing the use of single-use bags of any kind. Once passed, we will push out a robust education and outreach program to all of our business establishments using lessons learned from our last outreach as well as promoting the change using all city resources, social media, website, and the Laurel Independent. Staff will be available to assist businesses with signage for their stores, providing a consistent message throughout the city. I am open to any questions that you may have. If I do not have the answer immediately, please feel free to contact our city administrator via email and Miss Polly will contact me. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Blair. Are there any questions from the council? Um, Mr. Mayor, do you have any questions or comments?
Uh, no, we did receive a letter today. Um, I've not had time to review the whole thing, but it was from the Restaurant Association. Uh, I'll probably tomorrow follow up with uh, Ms. Blair and uh, see, city administrator uh, to see um, what that may or may not do to ours um, that we're looking to do. The other piece of this is um, the ordinance wouldn't go into effect until August the first of twenty twenty-three to kind of give us some opportunity to get out there and, and talk with others. The other thing that I will make sure we want to point out to individuals is if you remember uh, when we did this originally, um, we did not do any type of surcharge or tax uh, because our city solicitor at the time um, felt that uh, it could violate what the um, you know, the um, the county law on taxes. Um, so we went ahead and moved forward, which I, I think was a good move. I know it was a good move. And now we're trying to um, since we've got a ruling from the Attorney General's Office, which is allows us to um, say that somebody can put, you know, a store can do five cents or ten cents, whatever they want. The point of that is to really encourage individuals to bring their bags in and, and really do away with all of these different plastics and other things and some of the so-called reusable bags that are being put out there. But um, Ms. Blair's done a nice job of educating our business community and if the council sees fit to move forward with this, we would do the same uh, same there as well.
I, I got, I got a question, Mr. President. I mean, I was gonna save it later, but I was a little confused. I did read the article, the letter we got from Restaurant Association. I was under the impression we banned uh, plastic bags from the stores, it seems that it was affecting restaurants as well, but I see that it doesn't. So restaurants still can use plastic bags, but the store can't? Give me, give me some more clarity on that, um, Ms. Blair.
So uh, originally, uh, no, you are correct. Plastic bags were banned from all retail establishments, restaurants. Um, the exceptions were if you bought uh, rolls like at Harris Teeter and they had the plastic bags and so the rolls were going in the bag. So there were, there were certain exceptions and those exceptions are still in there. What the Restaurant Association um, is concerned about is that now for paper bags, what this ordinance is saying is paper bags will have a charge of ten cent. Now that ten cents will go back directly to the establishment. The city is not getting that ten cents, it's not a tax. It goes right back um, to, to help the business uh, reimburse their costs for paper bags. So uh, the Restaurant Association um, also sent the same letter to College Park and spoke during the College Park public hearing as to their concerns about the ten cent surcharge. Um, and College Park uh, did not give them the exception and pass the legislation as um, you see actually in uh, very similar to ours. Um, so plastic bags have been banned, but this goes further and says not only plastic bad, but that paper bags, um, the retail, the establishment will be, will charge the customer ten cent.
Okay, I missed that part. Okay, that's why I was gonna hold my questions. I go back and I, I probably sat down, I have a meeting with you and the city administrator to get more um, small stuff information on it as well. Cause I, I can see that concern is because if the store can charge ten cent and they banning bags, then they're like in certain jurisdictions, like in DC, they charge uh, you use a plastic bag, but the goal is to get rid of plastic bag permanently. So they want to be able to say, okay, you charging ten cent and we may as well be to use the bags and charge whatever percentage as well from the store. So uh, yes, yeah, I'll get with you guys. Let me think on this.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Sidnor. Any other questions from the council? Alright, I do have a few for you, Ms. Blair. Um, one, how did we decide on ten cents? Where did that figure come from?
Uh, the Sierra Club actually did an extensive study on the effects of the plastic bag ban um, in, in other juris, in, in jurisdictions and also in Laurel. And what they were finding is that what we really wanted to see was a change in behavior for people to bring true reusable bags and not just switch out one for the other. So what we, what they found is that um, the stores were compliant for the most part, the big stores, some of the smaller stores were, but the stores were compliant in the fact that they were giving away uh, the, the, the very thin plastic bags, but that instead of saying use a reusable bag, they were just giving out paper bags, which are still single use. So the whole purpose of this or the, the um, the momentum behind this is to truly change the behavior of consumers to use true reusable bags um, as opposed to single-use paper and certainly not plastic.
Thank you.
They found that the five cents was not making a difference. So uh, Montgomery County and Howard County charges by a five cents and it wasn't, it wasn't registering to anyone. Five cents was like, yeah, whatever. Um, but ten cents seemed to, to make more of an impact and that is just a minimum charge. If a business wanted to charge more than that to recoup their expenses, the city does not, is not dictating what the, uh, what that establishment does.
Thank you. How does this fee apply to the businesses that are double bagging with paper bags? Would that be a twenty cent fee for, I mean, I'm thinking.
That's a good question.
Many additional dollars on their, on their grocery bill.
That, that would, that's a good, that's a good question. I um, yes, that would be, that would be twenty cents. It's ten cents per bag. Um, and that's also up to the retailer. So the business is the one that's actually charging it. It would show up on the, on your receipt of how many paper bags you use, understanding that no plastic will be given out, sold, doesn't matter. Your, your choices are reusable, true reusable with a stitched handle or um, paper, but you're gonna be charged for paper. So it really does give the, 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 the power of choice to, to the consumer um, that you bring your bag and you don't have to worry about this surcharge, this charge at all from the retailer.
Has there been any feedback from the businesses that are, that are double bagging that if this fee were in place, they would have bags where they wouldn't need the double bag anymore? I know some, some retailers have much thicker bags than others.
Yeah, but again, the money is going back in their pocket, so it, it's not, it's not something that they have to uh, provide to, that, that the city has any stake in. So if they want to charge twenty cents, um, then uh, the city doesn't, is not dictating their actions.
Thank you. Um, I do have about ten other questions from the Environmental Affairs Committee that I'm gonna send over. I, I did send this out to our committee, they had a lot of feedback. They think it's a great idea. We just want to make sure that it goes through correctly. Um, is there consensus from the council to move this forward to the, to the next meeting or should we postpone this for the, for the later meeting?
Yeah, it's present.
Go ahead, man.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I was gonna say, um, I wanna get some more information on it, cause I'm gonna charge in ten cents and I noticed they'll get that money back some kind of way, they're gonna charge it in probably some kind of way, but I don't wanna rush this. I wanna like Lisa, I get some more questions from the experts, you know, and then come back.
What I was gonna um, suggest is uh, you may want to introduce it only um, Monday. That allow us, um, again, Michelle and, and others from the administration, we would not go out to the business community until we present something to the council anyways. Um, so now that it's been introduced and if you do a first reading, that helps get that word out to the business community. I don't know whether um, Mr. Love and his group may be able to have, you know, different emails and things that we have set up to be able to pass this legislation to the individuals. But again, I think if you at least introduce it, it's, you can, um, you know, you don't have to take action at the second meeting, but at least you've gotten that first reading and hopefully others will pick up as uh, of what we're trying to do as well. That would be my suggestions. Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, I will go ahead and submit my questions. Um, if everybody agrees, we'll leave it on for uh, first public hearing at the Monday meeting, April tenth. Um, if you have any further questions, please submit them to the administration. Moving on to the next agenda item, uh, ordinance number two thousand and ten, an ordinance of the mayor and city council of Laurel, Maryland to amend the Laurel City Code, chapter seven, garbage, waste, weeds, recycling, et cetera, to include a mandatory diversion of organics from the waste stream and providing for an effective date. Ms. Blair, you have the floor again.
Yes, so um, this is um, this is uh, I will try to keep myself um, from going over, but this is very close to my heart. This is the, the composting program. So in staying with the theme of, of progress, um, chapter seven highlights the need to reduce the type and amount of households' waste being taken to our landfill. More specifically, organics recycling, which is defined as the means by which residents separate organic waste from solid waste collected from their homes and that is processed at the county's organics recycling facility. The finished product is organic compost, thus completing the life cycle of our organic. Our curbside program has been used as a model to other municipalities in the area and has been presented at meetings of the Metropolitan Washington Council of Governments and the Maryland Recycling Network. And we are looking, and we are looking at great changes um, at both federal and state level with respect to the reduction of methane gas emissions as it re, uh, contributes to greenhouse gas emission. The new state, uh, the new, the state's new secretary of the environment, Serena um, McElwain, most recently was the undersecretary and chief operations officer for the Environmental Protection Agency in California. Um, our new secretary is no stranger to the benefits of organics recycling and the need to make it mandatory to divert organics from our landfills. Legislation at the state level is moving towards a more comprehensive program requiring certain entities, i.e. schools, to divert their organics from the waste stream and into a certified compost program. In addition to being environmentally one of the most effective and easiest ways to reduce methane gas emissions, the difference between landfilling a ton of trash and delivering it to our compost facility is at this time forty-three dollars a ton. Once passed, we would immediately push out a robust education and outreach program to all of our residents using technology and lessons learned from our One and Done program as well as promoting the change using all city resources, as well as promoting the change using all city resources, social media, website, and the Laurel Independent. Change is going to happen and it is closer on the horizon than ever before. With passage of this legislation, the city has the opportunity once again to be a progressive leader. I am open to any questions you may have, and if I don't have the answer, you can feel free to contact our city administrator via email and Ms. Polly will contact me.
Ms. Blair, are there questions from the council?
Mr. President, I do have a correction on what you all are looking at. If you go to the very back page, um under section seven thirty-nine dash and seven forty reserve, it's, it says, and it be further enacted or dated, this already should take effect the date of the of passage. Um, this would go into effect, just to not confuse everybody, the actual um um ordinance itself would go into effect on July first, twenty twenty-five of of the uh what we're trying to do here when we talk about uh composting. It would actually become mandatory uh that you would have to do it and the program would kick off and allow the mayor and city council to gradually purchase the containers and other things needed throughout the years and then in uh as well as educational um um means to get that word out to the to the um to the residents and when it would go into effect on July first of twenty twenty-five. I just wanted to make sure and point that out to everybody. Thank you.
All right, now I'll open it up for questions.
I may have a questions, but I was sending to um to city administrative office, yeah.
Ms. Blair, um, I do again have a list of questions from the Environmental Affairs Committee. Uh, but I I had a question. Our current, our current composting program, is it still a pilot or is it a full-fledged program now?
No, it's a full-fledged, it's a full-fledged program. It is a voluntary program. So um we need uh it it's a voluntary program. Um, and we're trying to expand it. This is one way to expand it or at least get it on people's radar that this is coming. So let's start uh slowly and uh it has a long rollout period that I think we can effectively reach all of our residents.
Right. I I have a question on the on the bins. I know we provide them for free currently for making it mandatory. I assume we're gonna continue to provide them.
Yes, the carts.
The carts. How many carts of trash do we have versus the carts of compost? I know it was a significant investment when we switched to one and done last year. What would this cost to switch the bins?
The composting carts are currently running at forty-seven dollars um per cart. The cost of resin went down from ninety-six cents per ton to seventy-seven cents per ton. So Ray-Rig, our current um supplier, um that is, that's uh that we use. Um, they can uh, these are currently made in California. We can purchase and have them make en masse and hold our costs down and then they wouldn't ship it until on demand. So we wouldn't be inundated with, uh, like we had the rollout for the one-and-done program. We would, we would roll it out much more slowly, but those carts would be available much more quickly.
Thank you. Uh, my final question would be, how does this apply to apartment buildings? I know currently they're on their own their own diversion stream, right? They have to pay for private service for apartment buildings and businesses.
Well, actually, um, our, the um company that currently provides the Big Belly solar trash and recycling carts that you see has a program that is a subscription program specifically for apartments. And it is solar-powered. It's a compactor. And um they're they're testing it in New York City and Manhattan. And what you do is uh you sign up for the program. Um, by your cell phone or another means, you unlock the bin by a special code and then you put your composting in. So it's not open to the public. Um, the um that had been brought up and were investigating, it it is not a huge expense, though if the city did um require multifamilies as as we would like to, um, then this would be a means for them to be able to do it without putting the burden on the residents to try to to find a composting program. They would, they would just, they would be able to do that there.
Thank you. Are there other questions from the council? Right. Hearing none. Uh, if you have further questions, please submit them to the administration. If council agrees, introduction and first public hearing on this item will be at the Marion City Council meeting on Monday, March or Monday, April tenth at six P M. Uh, with no further business before the council at tonight's work session, this meeting is adjourned.